This conference will now be recorded.
I call to order the meeting of December 21st of the planning zoning commission. Hold a roll, please.
Chair Marsh.
Here.
Vice Chair Carey.
Here.
Member Henigan.
Rosen.
Member Hudson.
Here.
Also, Member Lemming.
Here.
Member Kuzemski was absent with no.
Okay, shall we rise and?
By allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll extend any comments from the commission. Very good, we'll move on. I'll ask for any public comments. Okay, great. All right, last one. Approval of minutes for the last meeting. I move we approve the minutes.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, since we have a fairly lengthy agenda this morning, we're going to try and move it along as quickly as possible. Can I ask Tracy, if the commissioners remove their masks, because I know it's difficult to hear the people that are.
Yeah, you have the shields and you're six feet away. You either have the shield or you're six feet away. So if you'd like to take it down, you may, you don't have to.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the people that are listening online. Okay. Hearing no comments. Let's move on to the first development plan. Which is 95 Island Drive South. Obviously African here, yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Before anything, I'm just wearing.
Will anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you have this warning. And please speak directly into the microphone.
Good morning.
What? Good morning.
My name is Annie Carruthers. I'm an architect and principal of Insight Design Group. The address is 1546 Jackson Street, Hollywood, Florida.
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. Chair Marsh, you have to call for any expertise communications first.
Thanks, really. Are there any expertise communications with any of the?
No.
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 No. Thanks. Sorry.
Yes. My address is 1546 Jackson Street, Hollywood, Florida, 33020. We had presented this project as a new single-family residence at 95 Island Drive South. In the previous DRB hearing, and we had some comments regarding a few items. What I'd like to do is just take you through how we have addressed those items that were based on your comments. So among some of the first comments were relative to the architecture. We also do have the landscape architect here, who after my notes on all of the items that we adjusted, will also have a short presentation for you as well on the changes that we made to address those comments. Okay, so the first one was relative to the front elevation. And one of the comments was relative to the height of the garage. So what we did is, so I believe that it was basically just saying that the height was a little bit higher and it was a very strong element in the front. And so what we did is, we lowered the entire garage two foot four. We lowered the garage door and the architectural feature next to it. We lowered it two foot four. So that was a change that we made to the front. I do have the other elevation as well, so you can compare. And I think that another issue was that the way that we had shot it in the rendering was kind of straight on and it was, it was very strong. That's not necessarily how you will see the whole, as a whole, of the house. So I think that it definitely made an effect on the, on the front elevation. Another one of the comments relative to the front was the amount of windows. So this we studied a little bit because one of my responses during that meeting was that we did, in fact, had an extensive amount of windows. So going back, we did realize that we had almost 40% of the front in windows and openings. You know, in comparison to some of the other contemporary homes that had been approved previously, we felt that that was a good balance. I had mentioned that some of the negative space was a pause that you needed in the architecture. So we kind of maintained that, you know, that level of windows. We felt that that was very appropriate in comparison to some of the other ones in the area as well. However, there was a comment on the side elevations, that there wasn't enough windows. I think in general, we're speaking about windows. And so what we did is, we did add several windows to the side in order to embellish some of the side elevations. And that is in your new package, but I've also highlighted it here in this illustration. So what we did was, we added two windows to the north and two windows to the south, which broke up that expanse of negative space on the second floor, which was requested of us. So we did add them, you see that highlighted here. Also, there was a comment regarding the rear. And the comment was that the rear, I think the notes was more to ground the rear. It was kind of relative to the thinness of the columns. It was a lot of very thin columns and it needed a bit more grounding. So what I did was, I did embellish one of the main columns in the corner. We wrapped it in stone and made it stronger and heavier and wider and deeper. So this column is the one that we addressed that comment with, which was here. And we took it from a more of a pin column to a stronger column that would relate to the architectural column on the other side. So that was a change we made as well. Okay, I think that those were some of the changes we made. And I'm going to pass it along to Paul Catania.
Good.
Good morning, my name is Paul Catania. I'm a partner at Parker Uniti Design Group, landscape architect for the project. Our address is 825 South US Highway 1 Jupiter, Florida, 33477. Unfortunately, last time at the review, I wasn't here, so I wasn't able to kind of walk you through the proposed landscape plan. But today, what I did was brought a graphic that may help give you a little bit more visual of the contrast between where the planting is and where the hardscaped and house is. Just kind of hold that up here for you to see. What I'd like to do is essentially just walk you through the plan real quick and kind of run through, you know, each property as far as the front yard, the two side yards and the rear yard. And the front yard, with the utilization of the hoot system or the septic, we were able to gain more space for planting. And what we have in the front is a nice cluster of three coconut palms on the south east corner of the property. And underneath that, what I'd like to do is introduce a caliphile Brazilian beauty leaf tree. The neighbor to the south has also proposed a caliphile on their plan, so I thought that might be a nice tie-in. We have that overall canopy theme going there with the coconut palms above that to help soften the house. In front of the house, right at the street, I'm proposing a Canary Island date palm. I know we wanted to get some, some more massing up front, and I believe one of the comments has suggested a tree. Unfortunately, we have power lines overhead right there. I think the right thing to do would be propose a specimen palm that we know what the extent of that canopy size is going to be as opposed to a large canopy tree that may ultimately interfere with the power lines. And then on the northeast corner of the property, we have a large coconut palm that is going to swing out over the driveway. It's going to be curved. It'll soften that elevation of the house. And beneath that, I'd like to propose a pitch apple tree. Between the pitch apple tree and the Brazilian beauty leaf, that'll kind of anchor the two corners of the property at kind of the mid-upper level. And then we'll have a combination of coconut palms above that to really give a nice canopy in the front. Right at the front of the house, I also have a forestem at an idio palm. It's going to be about 18 feet tall, and that'll give a nice presentation right at the front without blocking too much, but give a little bit of texture, a little bit of height. If you move to the north side of the property, what we have are privacy hedges along the side where the equipment is. And I've also proposed some tall Christmas palms. Apparently, the neighbor to the north has a large existing hedge row of fishtail palms, and it's doing a great job of giving some buffer in between the two properties. Unfortunately, we were asked by the town engineer to remove an existing motocarpus u-hedge that is in our property, but is within the drainage easement. It's 10 feet tall right now and it's extremely dense. I'm asking that maybe we reconsider allowing us to keep that because right now it provides excellent buffer between our property and the property to the north. As you move further into the rear yard, we've got a combination of groves and ground covers with some Christmas palms to provide some canopy and some accent. On the southwest corner of the property, the, the neighbor to the south has existing coconut palms. What I'd like to do is add to that mass with some additional coconut palms so that we have nice screening in the second story balcony. And below that, a nice presentation of three blue Luton palms, which I believe are, we have some out front here at the town hall building, beautiful palm. Give us a nice texture, it'll handle the wind and it'll handle the salt. And then as you continue down the south property line, just a continuation of coconut palms at staggered heights to give us that, you know, canopy and buffer that we need and also continuation of a small leaf lucia hedge that will maintain for, for privacy at the lower level. And that concludes my presentation, does anyone have any questions?
Before we have any comments from the commission, you have some artificial turf that you.
Yes, yes, we have artificial turf in the rear, just in the rear yard, and it is separated by.
Can you just indicate where that is?
Yes, sir. It's right in here. And then just a little patch right in here.
I guess my question, this is maybe to step. It seems like there's a lot of coverage still on this property in terms of the previous. Have we, we've gone through that calculation? Duran? Or Cory?
Chair, Chair Marsh, if you go back, we need to have the town staff make a presentation first.
Okay, yeah, just while we had.
But we really got to do that, that way first, have the town staff make a presentation and then move to public comment before we make questions.
Okay, okay, that's fine. All right. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Nice presentation.
So Cory or Duran, if you have any comments to make, or Tara, if you have any comments on the engineering, drainage, and the question about the hedge in the drainage easement.
No comments?
Mr. Chairman, just regarding the synthetic turf reviewed in the initial review and I would go to the time. My knowledge there were no changes made to the synthetic turf amount being proposed, so it is within code.
Okay, thank you.
And Duran and Cory, does the project now meet all of the town codes?
Good morning, Duran, guys, a little official. So the portion of the focus on is the vertical aspect of it. Looking at the window size and do we have the required minimum sizes for the living spaces? And do we have the required windows? And, and that level, it has met the minimum requirements for this level of review. So once we have building permits, a further review would be done looking at more mechanical, electrical, and yet any piece, both regards to the vertical aspect of it and the building, which is the portion I'm looking at. I have no issues with this.
And Cory, does it meet all the zoning codes?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Tara.
So regarding the drainage easement, we asked to remove those existing trees because just like we did on inlet K, once those trees get into the pipe system, then the drainage is going to be compromised. So, which can be cumbersome to that road and the drainage.
Thank you. We are a public now, or?
Yeah, public comment. Public comment for us.
Okay, anybody in the public audience, any comments? Hearing then, I'm going to pass it on to the commission. Entertain any comments of the commission there?
When we get to landscaping, I'll have a, I'll have a comment on landscaping.
Okay, that's, yeah, thank you. Any concerns of the building architecture? I'll just say, I appreciate the effort taken to listen to some of the suggestions that were made. And I think you've responded very well. So I commend you on that. Any other comments on the building? Comments on our landscape?
I also would like to come, you on the changes you made to the garage. Because that is, that quartering view is the view as you come around the bend to look at that property. Can you give me, the landscape architect, please, could you give me a sense of the trunk size of that date palm? Because I'm, I'm still, I'm still not convinced that a solo tree, solo palm tree in that particular area is, is going to take away the height massing of, of the house since the lawn is going to be raised.
Sure, so Canary Island date palms, right now, we've got it specified to be 10-foot clear trunk, which we put in about 22 feet overall. The typical caliber size of a Canary Island date palm trunk, probably anywhere from 24 to 30 inches in diameter.
Majority?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that, you know, it's in perpetuity, I mean, at a young age, it's, it's very wide. So it, it starts off at 24 inches wide, anywhere from 24 to 30 inches in diameter. And that's what it would be throughout. And then as far as the canopy size, the spread on the Canary Island date palm is typically anywhere from 23 to, you know, 25 feet.
Is, are you familiar with the, the house next door? You, you were, you made a comment about the landscaping on that.
They have an existing Canary Island.
Is that what, is that what they're just putting in the, in their small island in the front?
That's what they have in the island as well, yes.
That's what I was hoping you were choosing. Is there, with the flexibility of the hoot system, being able to move the piping where, where you have, still have some space at the side? Is there a way you could create enough around the base of that palm to put some smaller or some additional landscaping that's in the three to four to five-foot-high scale like the island that's there now?
We do, we do, I believe we could make that, we could make that work. What I, what I wouldn't want to do is, is make it too dense in just such a compact area where it may look a little odd to where we have this buildup in one little pocket and then we have, you know, we step down to lawn area. But I think we could probably work in some accent material, maybe vermilion or something like that.
That's very low.
Well, there's vermilion, it gets to be about three, three feet tall. I just don't want that one little pocket.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to get you to make the pocket bigger. I mean, the massing of the, the house that's there now is mitigated by that whole island out front and we're replacing that entire island with a tree.
Well, let's keep in mind also that the massing of the house also has, we've got three coconut palms off to the side. We've got another coconut palm in the front, they're curving towards the front of the house. We have a forestem Christmas palm in front. But I, I think what we could do is probably extend the system further this way in this pocket here, which would allow us to gain more unobstructible area and clear. And then we can do some accent plant material in there that would maybe be in the.
Sure, but I'm not talking vermilion, so I'm talking tree.
Trees or like a hedge or?
Well, yeah, something more than, you know.
Yeah, we could do some Queen Emma crinum lilies, which get to be five, six feet tall. We can do a pocket amassing right in here, that's something a little bit beefier, absolutely.
That's, that's about a, a long lifetime, it's not just a two or three year.
Absolutely, I try to gear all my landscaping plans towards plant, plant material that, that's going to last. I don't want to put anything that's, that's two years, it's just a waste of the home. So, yeah, we, we could certainly do, I, I think crinum lilies would be a nice fit there. You know, the Queen Emma has that nice burgundy kind of leaf to it. And if we add a mass and a cluster there, you'll have a nice five to six-foot mass of leafy texture in the front.
Okay, Haley, thank you. Yeah, I think the Canary Island palm has a very distinct trunk. I don't think you really want to cover it up too much.
I agree.
But a good suggestion, so. Okay, any other comments on the landscaping or? I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Based on the competent substantial evidence and testimony presented, I move to approve the development plan at the project located at 95 Island Drive South and conditioned upon the increased landscaping as described by the landscape architect.
Planting in the easement. Plantings in the easement that we, David requested.
We have. So amended.
We're, we're still going to require the removal of the plants, is that correct?
Based on what steps in the engineering of the estimate. It's unfortunate, but.
Yeah, good idea though.
Looking for a second?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Moving here. Another quasi judicial hearing for number 21 Ocean Avenue. Yep, Vincent here. Anybody had any expertise? No.
No.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Will anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you affirm or do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did.
When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you have this warning. And please speak directly into the microphone.
Thank you. Austin Bersey, 21 Ocean Avenue. We, we went back to the drawing board and we really spent a lot of time addressing primarily the front elevation and then the, the east and west elevation. So on the front elevation, the core issue that you guys addressed was the amount of penetration in the front. And while we find that the penetration is a key concept of the design, we were able to decrease it by 20%. So what we did is, we removed the entire bottom row of windows and replaced it with stucco. And in front of that, we put a four-foot landscaped hedge. And then the top row of windows, all along the top, one of the board members had mentioned putting shutters, which we installed custom shutters that matched the wood cladding. And then if you go to the next drawing, it's a little bit, these are much lighter renderings. But what we did here is, the first thing that was brought up is that we had this punch card pattern of these small tab-sized windows, which bothered a few of the, the members. We've removed all of those. And what we did instead is, we switched from casement windows to three-panel sliding glass windows, which are much larger. We put about approximately 40% wood cladding, the same color wood that's on the front of the house. We put a living wall, which will be an herb garden for the kitchen of the house on both sides of the property. And we increased, I know the board has addressed with a few properties, casement windows, I mean, clear storey windows along the, along the ceiling line of each floor. And we increased those heights by about 50%. And we think that those things combined with two faux columns and two faux beams that when viewed on an angle will provide a little bit of a pause, that it really broke up the, the start structure that you can see. We did another test of the drive up on the approach to the community. And we're very confident that the significant streetscape of landscaping will really obscure the view of the house. And on the neighboring side, if you scroll down, oh, up, oh, just a little bit, up, down, just a little bit. On this one, as you can see, we, the living wall, we added a new window into the eat-in kitchen area, which is on the first floor height, that's another clear storey window. And then the two chicklet windows, the casement windows, was replaced with a three-panel sliding glass window. And then we added that decorative column and beam. And I would strive to say that we really stressed to hit basically the maximum allowed change that we could at the property line, which is 25 square feet. That if we were to do more than that, it would break the code. So we went as far as we could in terms of providing a change without completely redesigning the interior of the home. So we're excited to hear your comments and suggestions and.
Great, thank you. Comments from staff?
No exception on the building.
Engineering? Any public comments? Fair hearing then. For the commission, discussion?
I have none.
I have none either, I think you guys did a nice job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think you've responded, I think the west elevation has much improved. However, I'd like to see you or suggest that you enhance that with some landscaping as well, some vertical elements. It is improved, but I still think you're going to be highly visited.
Okay.
Just my opinion. And I definitely appreciate the reduction in the penetration. Okay, with that, any, you'd like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Based on the competent substantial evidence and testimony presented, I move approval of the development plan for the project located at 21 Ocean Avenue with the following conditions, that the west elevation have an increase in vertical landscaping to soften the west elevation.
Okay. Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Mary Christina.
Okay, moving on. Another quasi judicial hearing for project at 82 Island Drive. That's Island Drive South, right?
Yes. Yeah. Do we need to correct that?
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, it's the same, but we only have 82 Island Drive South, but yeah.
Okay, good morning.
Hold on, call for any expert.
Also, because these are new items, I think it's best to have the staff do its report first, their contest at the stage. And then you can have the applicant. We can, we can do it on the last piece because they were continuation from.
Okay, um, we'll entertain staff comments.
Other expert, expert take and then answer.
Expert take. The expert take, no.
No.
We need the menu.
No.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Will anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you continue it. And please speak directly into the mic.
Okay, staff.
Chairman Cora Morgan, I have no additional comments on, on this application.
Does it meet all the zoning codes?
Yes.
Morning again, Duran, no exception, digging. Engineering.
Tara, I have any, any?
Okay, thank you. Starting now.
Morning.
Morning.
Can we pull up the project, is it possible? Can you scroll down to the existing survey? Further down. I think it's a little further. Keep going, there you go. Good morning, uh, my name is Richard Remmer. I'm with RWB Linares Architecture, 1600 South Dixie Highway, Suite 400, Oakerton, Florida. First of all, I'd like to wish everybody happy holidays. I am here to review 82 Island Drive, Eric and Leslie Newsbaum residence for Bargo Homes. The new house that will be replacing an existing three-bedroom, two-bath home, one-story, about 3,100 square feet. The existing house left sits at approximately 6.8 NABD and the crown road is 4.39. The new proposed five-bedroom, five-bath house, finished floor will now be at 10-foot NABD because of the new FEMA flood map requirements. The garage portion of this new home will be at 6.5 for comfortable driveway slope. Can we go to the site plan, please, which is scroll up towards the, the beginning? Okay. The new house sits on a lot size of 12,000 square feet. New AC square footage is about 37, 45 under air and the total under roof is 46, 42. Uh, the house meets all square footage requirements of FAR of 36% and the lot coverage at 32%. The front setback is 25 foot, which the house sits at 25 foot eight. The side setbacks are at 25, I'm sorry, the side setbacks are 15 feet and the rear is at 25 feet. The overall height from finished floor is 25, seven and a half inches, which is below the required 36, 36 feet. We go to the, the front rendering, please. The style is a two-story coastal transitional home with a smooth stucco finish. Color is a Sherman Williams extra white. Uh, the multi-sloped roof will have a burrell dark charcoal gray flat rooftop. There will be applied travertine accent stone at the garage in front entry locations. There will also be brackets, um, at the corner eve locations. There'll be a straight drive, uh, with gray pavers, uh, to the garage. And there'll be, uh, gray pavers also walk up to the front, um, entry. The rear of the house. We go to the, uh, the rear. The rear, the rear of the house has a covered patio that opens up to a spa, a pool and spa and a pool deck area, which will have ivory colored pavers with step downs to the wood dock. This house design meets and needs the needs of the news bombs and also meets or exceeds the requirements of the ocean ridge building and zoning codes. This is a simple design and the architecture, the massing and the overall presentation with the design landscaping fits well along the streetscape of Island Drive. I'm going to bring Louis up to discuss the, uh, the landscape.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Louis Blahos, um, the landscape architect, we just agree for this project. Basically, we tried to keep it simple, but meet and exceed the landscape code for owner's request. Basically, because the existing residents that they live in, especially on the sides, they have drainage problems. And in this situation, trying to get the drainage from the rear patio, which the B-mat NABD elevation increased substantially to the front, requires a, you know, a shallow slope and also a lot of inlets and whatever that we can't plant any trees. That said, uh, for the front, we have a, a couple of, uh, hollies on either side of the driveway. In the center, uh, area between the garage and the entry, there's a large 14-foot, uh, plus, uh, media palm. And on the right side, which is predominantly one, one-story, there is a couple of, uh, ligation trees, of course, understory. And then all the way to the right of the property line and between that and the septic tank, there's a couple of Chinese spam pumps, which are existing. And, um, rare at their side that we're relocating in, in that area because there's not going to be that much built. In, in the rear, uh, well, on the north side, there's an existing five-foot hedge. And there's, uh, on the neighbor's property and there's ample screening with, uh, some fishtail palms and, um, aricas. Um, on the south side is a, uh, ficus hedge, uh, with, with existing material. And, uh, we are proposing to plant a, uh, portocarpus hedge at four foot for starters up against the, uh, the ficus, because the ficus has gotten so big that the bottom of the hedge is leggy. And, uh, there's no privacy between the two residences. Uh, in the rear property line, we have a sea grape hedge, which the owner is going to maintain at, uh, six foot. He's more about the privacy than he is about views to the water. And, um, on, on one, on the north side, we have a, a clusia tree, just to screen the adjacent private space. On the south side, where the spa is, we have a, another, Edelia palm is a central focal point. And the other focal point is towards the water and that is a, um, Montgomery palm, a triple. That said, any questions?
Other comments?
Okay, yeah.
Anybody have? Okay, back to the commission. Any comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
On the site landscape plan, uh, on three sides, there's a dark line, including at the back. Is that a retaining wall?
Yes.
And what's the height of the retaining wall on the neighbor's side?
Well.
How much differential will there be to the neighbors on?
Well, the, the neighbor is at, at one, at one point in the back, which is the highest point, where it, uh, 6.5 feet. And the neighbor on the adjacent property is 5.1. So I would say 14 to 18 inches.
Okay.
Okay? Um, and that's the maximum point, because then as we get into the front, where the wall is, the neighbor is at 5.7, where it's six foot. So we're really just looking at a few inches there, uh, four inches.
Thank you. And the, um, I'm not familiar with a lot of the planting material. So one of the questions I'm interested in, is there a canopy tree in the front of the building? Is it the front or is these, are these palms?
Uh, no, there's only one palm and that's between the stairs and the garage quad, like a nice specimen. And on our other side of the garage are hollies, which are canopy trees. And, uh, also on the other side, we have two, uh, ligation trees, which are small canopy trees. Uh, I just want you to understand that the only area that's, that's two-story on this side is just the hatched area in, in the background. And, uh, that is approximately about 45 feet plus away from the, uh, front of the yard.
Thank you.
Yeah. The question on trees. Is it possible, um, you seem to, um, the southeast. Is it possible to get another tree there? I mean, you're, you mentioned privacy. You're looking across the canal or the river, as it's called. You know, it's very open to the club.
Well, the hedge that we're proposing, which is a sea grape, is. Pardon me?
Is it six feet?
Well, it's going to be, um, four foot upon installation and it will be maintained at six to seven feet.
Yeah, I'm just, okay, it just seems you could have a really nice tree there.
Well, we could put another tree. It wouldn't be anything big. I, I would recommend maybe another clusia. You know, it doesn't drop leaves because it is close to the pool. So we don't want anything that's going to shed and create more of a maintenance problem. But if that's the case, sure.
Let me, um, it's just a suggestion. There's quite a drop from the finished floor to the grade on both sides of the house. It's like a two-foot drop. My.
Yes.
How is that being dressed? Is it an extended footing or?
Well, it's, it's addressed by the, uh, by the retaining wall that's going all the way back. And then also, if you look, when, when you go up the, the, uh, into the covered patio, that's at nine and a half. And then there's three steps to the right and then three steps.
I, I understand all that, sorry. I'm just saying that at the edge of where the foundation of the building is, we actually have two foot, two and a half foot difference.
I would, I would presume, uh, I didn't design Arctic, but I would presume that there would be a stem wall from the building to the grade.
That's going to extend the vertical height.
Okay. They're gone in there.
Sure.
Well, I'll let the builder in for the Arctic. You gotta do it. Yeah, man.
Just speak it, say your name. We know who you are, Stephen.
Bargain home. And what we're doing is, because we have a piling system on the house, instead of just a 24-inch grade beam, we're going to end up some places 42, 48 to take care of the grade there on the perimeter of the home. To try to fix up, because nothing you can do when, since the FEMA changed the regulations, there's not much more, you know. So we'll just step before that.
Yeah, it just seems unusual to have that much.
Instead of putting huge retaining walls and everything else. That's how, you know, the owner must wanted to dress it all. They didn't want to be too hot with all the neighbors, so.
Yeah, it'd seem, it'd seem more economical to just increase the grade.
Yeah, but putting higher retaining walls on the sides and things like that. It works out good for them. They're happy with it.
Right. Any other comments?
Yeah, uh, landscaping at the front. Um, between the driveway, the walkway, and the way you've done the septic, you've basically created a green desert in front of it. I don't, I, I just, for, forever, all we're going to see is the face of that house on the street. That's not the neighborhood. Well, as far as the desert, the majority of the front of the house is a septic tank, which obviously we can't. But the septic can be moved. You've chosen to put it there. I didn't choose to put it there. Somebody has, that's the drawing I'm looking at.
Yeah, I think what has been, you know, you can realign the septic drain fields.
Well, as I'm looking at it right now, we're, we're five foot from the property line in both the south and, and west side, which basically gives us more room up against the house in the front to add landscaping, if that's what you would like. Put a pad at the side of the driveway. That could be drain field. It's not hard to solve. You just chose not to solve it.
I think, yeah, we have to just, we can't tell them how this.
I'm not, okay. I'm just telling, I'm just telling you, it's.
I'd rather say that, I, Eli, I understand exactly what you said. The drain field can be realigned to create some more planting area for a tree in that south.
You're precluding this owner or anyone else from ever planting in that area. Which area are we talking about? Are we talking about here? Can I finish, please? Yes. I can't tell you to plant in that area, but you're, I can tell you that it's wrong to stop someone from ever being able to plant. You're, you're making any change for the, for the future prohibitively expensive for someone. And it doesn't need to be that way.
I think what we should do, Neil, is we can make a suggestion and it can be a condition that they revisit, you know, the alignment of the drain field to allow for. I think the concern from where I stand is to get more shade trees along.
Absolutely.
Along the road.
Absolutely. I mean, you're, you're taking, you're taking down, I don't know the name of it. You're taking down one of the most beautiful trees on that street. It's on the, if you look at the original, uh, it, it looks like a Hawaiian. It's a Frangipani.
It's a Frangipani.
Frangipani. Okay, I didn't know the name of it. Yeah, it's a Frangipani. Or it, it is and. Well, I, I, I just said it, most, when it booms, it's, it's, it's most beautiful. I agree. I agree. And, and I, you know, I would like to either relocate some of those or even keep them for that matter. But because of how we need to raise the elevation, it prohibits us, because you gotta move them one time. If you have to move them twice, you know, then they're gone. Some palms you can, because of their fibrous roots and so forth.
Right.
But going back to what you were saying, I, number one, I didn't design the drain field, okay? This is what was given to me. Number two, I'm assuming that that's the size that's required for the residence, okay?
I'm not, I'm not arguing that.
So, so I'm trying to find out right now is, if you put a condition, are we talking about relocating the tank, the drain field?
The idea, excuse me if I couldn't, because we can move this a lot. Drain field design is done by an engineer, and they just take what seems to be the optimum location. But I'd like to bring Mr. Vardar up to the, and see if he, I think he'll understand what I'm gonna suggest.
Mr. Neil, again, if, if you would like to add more height closer to the building.
Let me just, if I could have Mr. Vardar.
Hey, how you guys doing?
Good, Steve. You're familiar with what Neil is referring to?
Yeah.
No, I think, let me, if I could, just a suggestion.
Okay.
Obviously, the commission has some reservation about the exposure
Yeah.
that you're presenting on the street.
Yeah.
So if you could get with Enviro Design or whoever did this.
Yeah.
And have them accommodate the required drainage system, but allow for this gentleman, your landscape architect, to be able to address the concerns of the commission, which is to try to get some more mature material.
Right there at the center part, right there, or I guess.
I think it's a reasonable suggestion and request.
I'll see what we can do within the limits. I have no promise within the limits of the health department and everything else, because, you know, they get tricky, so whatever we do, we'll do it.
Enviro Design can do.
Yes, alright, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Neil, you.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes your presentation. I'll just stop in a little discussion. Any commissioners, any comments?
Yeah, I like to look at the place. I don't have the same heartburn that Neil has over the fact that you can see the house. Maybe a larger tree would be nice, but I also like to see homes when I drive by them. And too often, I think they're hidden by landscaping. Now, that's preference. But I think, I think the presentation was good, and I like to look at the house.
Definitely. Neil, you've stated what your concerns are, so.
Pardon?
You've stated your concern, so I think we're.
I have, and the house, the house is satisfactory. I'm not, I'm not commenting on the, on what I'm seeing. I'm just commenting on the use of the law.
Rick?
I'm good with the comments made by others.
Yeah, I think, I think the house is well-done. I'm not a fan of the travertine plating, but I'll just go with Rick. I think it's inappropriate material for facade or veneer. But all in all, I think it's a well-done project, so. Entertaining motion.
Rick has, has the known place you're down for doing this, so I'm, I'm assuming we're gonna say, let's go. The possibility of looking at subtle movement in the septic field.
Spin it again, Rick.
Based on the competent, substantial evidence and testimony presented, I move to approve the development plan of the project located at 82 Island Drive South, with the condition that the engineering drawings be revised to relocate substantial portions of the drain field to allow for revision in the landscape architecture to soften the front street elevation with landscaping.
Sure. You just, substantial is a lot. Did we say practical instead of substantial?
We'll leave it to the staff to make judgments on this. I think we're to give guidance in staff.
I'm just worried about both, what we can do, because, you know, they got all the setbacks.
Okay.
So whatever we possibly can do, we'll do.
Staff are understanding of the direction.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, with that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 18 Hershey Drive. Am I getting this right now? Steph coming first? Too early. Any expertise?
None.
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 That's what we have to go over, because that's what I'm gathering with Steph, that they're more watching.
None, just for me.
Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record on whether or not you've been going in, and please speak directly into the microphone.
Good morning and happy holidays. Scott Coriel, I'm the owner, agent, and project manager for this, this particular project. Also with me is John Riskus, general contractor, and from Yates Associates Architecture, is Jim Mowley. Both, both may or may not be speaking, dependent upon questions. So at a very high level, this is a 200-square-foot addition. We are, sorry, is that better? Okay. This is the 200-square-foot addition, an enclosure of an existing porch to expand the living space. This is a very, it's an 1,800-square-foot home. We're simply expanding the living room to include the porch enclosure, and we're adding one bathroom. It's currently a three-bedroom, two-bath, and we're making it a three-bedroom, three-bath. It has a abnormally large bathroom today, that we're splitting into two bathrooms. That's at a very high level. We have the rendering from the front elevation. While she's teeing that up, I will tell you that additionally, new, all-new windows will be added, hurricane-impacted, of course, meeting code. Windows will be added, replaced, and a new, instead of a single front door, it will be a double door. That's the front elevation that we're looking at currently, no windows. See if there's anything else here. Again, it was 1,801 foot, increased to 2,000, 2,000 square feet, a little over 2,000 square feet. It's pretty straightforward, the, the project. Glad to answer any questions. You have a whole deck in front of you, but.
A question. I see that it's a LLC ownership with an out-of-state owner.
Yes.
Can you describe the intention for this property? Is it being redeveloped for resale? Has it been redeveloped for rental property?
For rental, for rental property. He has not determined at this time the, the long-term longevity of the project, I mean, of the use, but initially, it's probably gonna be for rent.
For resale?
For, for rent. Under the rental.
For rental. And, and the reason we're interested in that, of course, is, as you add more restrooms, and you have rental property, I have one that's under rental right next door to me, the number of vehicles seem to increase when these properties are in rental. And I wanna make sure that we have, that it's a very tight street, that we have sufficient off-street parking here. So maybe that's a question for the staff. Do we, are we comfortable with the availability of parking here?
Mr. Chairman, top man, 41, the project does need to park.
Thanks for the question, really quickly. Is the owner aware that we have a, we don't allow short-term rentals in this town?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Thank you, Steve. Steph, any other comments?
No.
No other.
No, no exception, but official.
Um, there is no drainage plan, so.
So I've been in touch with Enviro Design. You mentioned them earlier today. We're just awaiting, we're, I have the review by Tara, and item number. Let's see, she's down here on item number, the drainage is four, I think, and we are absolutely work with staff on the drainage plan and make sure there is a, a new drainage plan for the, the front driveway there. Totally agreeable. I'm just waiting on Enviro Design to provide.
Yeah, I forgot, we have a Alpine Chalet in town.
Well, that, that's the existing. We're not changing anything on the, that roof is there, so we're trying to, we're trying to make it as pretty as we can.
Forgot totally about it.
1981 architecture.
I think what you're doing is upgrading, obviously, and updating. The concern I have is, which doesn't exist now, that, with that really substantial roof area, how you're going to address drainage, you know, by gutters and distribution, I think that we're gonna have to really look at that.
We will work with staff on any drainage issues that there.
It is a massive roof area. I think the materials are fine. I, I, I noticed that driveway on the side from the, would be the west side, I guess, is added, that's new, or is it?
It's, it's a pebble, it's a pebble drive, and there is a septic tank that sits back behind. Let me get to that.
No, I see it, yeah, I've seen it.
Yeah. It's a pebble.
Well, I, I'm just responding to Commissioner Carey's, Carey's comments, that, you know, this is a situation where there is no garage, obviously.
Yeah.
And it appears that there's a fair amount of.
Off-street parking.
Yes, you can fit three, 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 almost, three, three, four cars with that pebble drive, it's four cars easily in this driveway.
All right, any other comments? The landscaping, really.
There's, there's not much on it.
Looks like some coconut trees and foundation planted.
It, it's mostly the existing landscaping is staying, and we will purely add anything that's needed, but we're just trying to, you know, beautify the front to give it a nice in-keeping architecture and landscape elements, but I don't think there's anything exotic that is being proposed.
Could we ask, or, again, it is a rental. Is there any way we may suggest it as a condition to look at upgrading the streetscape, landscaping, maybe some hedging in that island to.
Sure, sure.
Give a little bit of.
We have calusa there now, this, this rendering, but it would, there is calusa there. I see a, clusia hedge existing.
Is that gonna remain?
Yes.
Well, it's.
There's a photograph.
I think that whole landscaping has to be revamped. I mean, it looks a bit tired at the moment.
Well, there, you, you see, we are gonna add some things to it, if, on the landscape plan. Do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm glad to take any comments and address them with the condition. We're absolutely in agreement. I mean, we're personally big fans, landscaping, so.
I think it's gonna help not only your use, but the neighborhood as a whole. This is one of our unique streets, so there's a lot of charm and eclectic nature that it is, so.
Okay.
But I, I would suggest that, you know, we create some kind of buffer between the drive, Hershey Drive, and the circular driveway.
Okay. Absolutely, we'll take that as a condition.
Rest of the commissioner in agreement. All right. Apart from that, it's good upgrade.
Yeah.
The buffer that you're asking for, you want a free buffer or a mesh buffer?
Well, it's really a hedge buffer from the right away. Partly because if it becomes rental, and, you know, there's a lot of vehicles, various types of vehicles on the island. So, Rick, you wanna?
Well, do you wanna open it up for public comments?
Any public comment? I don't see many public left here on this chief. Sure, please. You wanna come, you come to the floor?
I have.
Just state your name.
My name is John Riskus, Riskus Construction. We've been doing this permit procedure now for about six months. The demolition permit alone was 103 pages of application to get through, which we have. Will you give us conditional permit to get started with construction? Second to landscaping rule?
Yeah, this is just development plan review. Once you, they approve, then you go for the permit. They, they are not allowing you to start construction. You have to build the initial signs up on that.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Based on the competent, substantial evidence and testimony presented, I move that the development plan for this project located at 18 Hershey Drive be approved with the following condition, that a landscape hedge buffer be added along Hershey Drive.
You said that for the drainage plan to be provided and for the.
Drainage, and the approval of the drainage plan and all necessary additional plans for this town.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Okay. Thank you. I may need some assistance with the other items on the agenda here. Let's have to introduce each one of these.
You wanna call the next item?
Okay, the next item is regarding development plan review checklist, which I think everybody will see in their coffee.
Charlotte, if you wanna start with the second one, I know we'll add something to it. So, yes, we have updated the checklist. We made additional changes after we met with member Chair Mark. So what we try to do is just reduce the items submitted by a little bit, just reduce the paperwork that the applicant will have submitted. And as you see, the items that we change are highlighted, it's either yellow or green. Do you wanna see the new checklist that was placed on the dials this morning?
Just then.
Yeah.
Yes, I added a whole section here. Based on our conversations, I added a whole section, as if you're looking at it, it, it says page 12 on the bottom there. We've added a section for the applicant to address how each element of the code section 62-56 is met by providing a narrative with the application. They also need to infer which type of architectural style that they will be submitting. So it's gonna be upon them to give you a narrative of their project and how it meets.
Is this revised one now standalone? We don't need this whole thing?
Yes, so from now moving forward, even though the application's gonna be required, they're only gonna be giving me the original copy. For you, you all will just get the narrative moving forward, so you will not get the entire application of all those pages.
No, I'm just talking about this old document that came in the package.
Yeah, discard that.
Throw that away, discard that.
Discard that.
Alright, so I haven't digested the new one yet, so.
Okay, so.
Oops, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, the new one, Neil, is that page that you're holding there in your right hand?
It is the change.
That's the one that starts with page 10?
Yes, actually, in your packet on page three. Yeah, the only change that we added from what you guys received to now is adding that one thing, like that, that narrative, that they will have to just go by what the post base and just answer every single of how their, their building is accommodated to the neighborhood of their architectural design and so forth. What we've done is we've just taken the town code, section 6356, and we've dropped it in this application, so that makes. What we've done is we've just taken the town code section sixty-three fifty-six, and we've dropped it in this application so that they can actually see what the code says and then give you a narrative as to how they're meeting that. And we think that will make everything go a little bit smoother for you if you're on diets.
Yeah, we meant to, I think, the whole commission was in agreement that to get some of these packages that are just cumbersome, a lot of redundant information for our review that we kind of tailor it to permit down to something that's what I call design development rather than construction documents. Because we don't need to get that deep into the process. It's also a relief for the the applicants so that they're not committing to all these other consultant agencies.
Let me ask clarification because I wasn't sure in looking at this. Is it just that we're getting a smaller portion of what's submitted to the town? Or is the applicant getting more streamlined in what the applicant has to submit before he gets approval from us?
In a sense, it is going to. Certain things are still going to be required. For example, the application, you just you all will see it, so they won't have to pay as much for copies. And we're still going to require them to submit drainage plans. It's just you guys won't get all the copies. Tara will review it. So there still will be that review process, and you all get the memo of whatever Tara writes. If there's any issues with drainage or anything or so forth, but we're just reducing how much we're requiring them and how many copies, because I know that was one of their issues, is how many copies they have to make. So that was one of the big things. We did take a little bit of other documents away completely. But majority is still will be, I mean, they will still have to submit a a couple of things. It's just we're reducing the amount of everything they have.
This part part of this came out of our workshop and comments of Steve Varga, and I wish he would have stayed for the
I thought that's
Tried to kind of look you know, because I, I mean, I really would like to get that kind of we we want what we need to make the design review decisions here. But to make it as efficient and and like least costly to the applicant to get past this point. Even if that means then at this point, then they have to go back and complete the work in order to pull their permits and things. I mean, that's my view on. It may not be practical, but it still seems like to me all we're doing is streamlining the portion of this big package that comes to us for our convenience, but it's not making it any better for the applicant.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I I I sorry, Chris.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, we're really kind of, and I deal with this monthly myself. Most municipalities have what we're suggesting as a setup, so you don't have, you know, because it's unfair. And we've seen it over the last few months, that people come in here with completed drawings. We're then reviewing it. If we have some problems, they're stuck because they're committed. You know, they've drilled out really deep to their construction documents. And it's, you know, one comment can affect three different types of of consultant input. So if we get a reduced with the intent, which is a key word of what they're trying to do, may not have all the technical aspects of what we've been seeing, but it's it you'll see that the type of architecture, the renderings, floor plans, landscape plans, those are our main concerns at this level of review. And I think if we can get that, you know, find you, it's going to take a little bit of you know, shakedown to to get it to where we are comfortable, staff comfortable, and more importantly, applicants, you know, comfortable. But I just think these again, and and you see, one of the things I do want to suggest that we add in the package is what I call previously approved and current approval.
We did actually.
Yeah, I know. I asked you to do it, but you know, this would have been these two, the first two on the agenda this morning. Because it's not easy for everybody that's not trained to see what the changes are, but if you do it over and under, it can be in black and white. It doesn't have to be colored, so you can see the differences in how they've responded.
Yeah, so moving forward, is it approved? That will be one of the requirements is that they're going to have
Everybody understand that?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I I understand that, and I understand what you described, but I'm not sure that what I heard from Tracy that the process matches what you described. It seems like to me that they're still getting in deep into the drawings in order to get it to the town, and then the town takes and calls that down to a smaller set for us, but but if we make a comment and send them back, they're back to the same place of bringing multiple engineers. I want to get them, I want to make it less expensive for them to get before us so that if we ask for something, they don't just keep seeing dollar signs. They say, oh, that's a good suggestion. We'll we'll make that change.
Right. So really, what I think you want to get back to is when we first started this, you had a concept plan. That was it. You just had the concept plan. It showed you the outside of the building. It showed you a floor plan, and that was it. We didn't have all the construction documents, the engineering. It didn't have any of that.
We're creating a hybrid, I think, and I think to your concern, a lot of what Tracy's is really written verbiage. Just, you know, describe the style, you know, your coverages, all the criteria, which are then going to go to Derani, you know, for compliance review. But what we're here really to do is to look at the aesthetic aspect of what is submitted.
Yeah.
We just don't need to get technical. I mean, we can keep it the way it is, but I I really think it's it's creating some, you know, from an applicant's standpoint, it's an unnecessary expense. It's a commitment much too early in their process of development.
Well, to reinforce what what Rick is saying, don't we have to have the applicant in the building department decide at what point you can extract the piece that we need? They may still be working on all this other stuff. Right now, it's as Rick is saying, they're going all the way to the endpoint, and then they're pulling out the pieces we need.
That's that's not what we want to do. I can tell you, as an applicant, I I I want to know there's an issue early on.
Actually, what you're getting now is you're getting the complete documents that they would need for a building.
No, it's not. No, it's not. So we clarify
Almost.
Almost, it's ninety-five.
And we clarify this because I know some people do include it into their their application, and that's not the case. We do not need demolition, mechanical, electrical plants, or any of those plants that are building, and that's why guy specifically instructs in his review that, you know, he doesn't have any exceptions, but he will do a complete review during the building permit stage. This is not the building permit stage, so we try to not, sometimes they do submit that just because they want to be extra. But we're trying to very much in this application specify, we do not need those at this stage, because this is not the stage for us to be looking at electrical, mechanical, plumbing, or any of that. So we did clarify that because I know some applicants do just want to do everything at this stage, and it's that's not that's not the case.
Yeah, I think the burden is going to be on staff initially because that's the receipt of an application. So I think staff needs to direct the applicants as to what the requirements are for this review.
Yeah, I think it admits here too. It does say here in yellow, if you look at the second bullet here on the first page, do not include demolition, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, cans, or any other things not listed here.
Yeah, but that's again, unfortunately, I'm in this business. You don't want to get technical, you know, you you don't need to have all the technical information, the sections of the building, that kind of thing. So there are a number of components. I mean, I think it's, as I said, it's going to be a little bit of a learning curve here, how we get it, but I hope that the rest of the commissioner agreement that we don't need to have these voluminous packages.
I agree with that, but my goal also, and I think it's a stated goal in the workshop, was to streamline the process and the cost for the applicant.
Yeah.
And I'm we got to make sure, we got to make sure that that's, you know, this this looks like still a pretty substantial checklist for the applicant. And I
It's it's really not. I mean, it's a lot of verbiage here, obviously, but I said, you know, it's tick the boxes, whatever you need to do.
Can can I ask you a question, Mark? Is this typical of what you see in Gulfstream or now?
Yeah, I mean, this this is still, I mean, I agree with Rick to a point. This, some of this is still a little bit verbose and lengthy. The application, in my experience, coming to this commission, could be five pages at the most, five to seven pages. That's that's what the normal package you know, we've added, and let me remind everybody, we've added streetscape, which I think is critical. We've added, what was the other one we added? There was another, well, photographs. Again, I mean, we all go, I think, to the sites and review that, but again, for the record, for illustration, if we have a problem.
This guide this guidance that we have to review this checklist, I I obviously, you saw my concerns during this last meeting. I I I don't see how we can do a site plan, a landscape plan that doesn't include stuff that it's it's here, it's talking about eliminating, so.
No, I think that's a good catch. You have to have it the area reserved for assistance.
Absolutely.
How they get it in, like we got into this morning, is not our correct. You know, we're just, we're just telling them that there's a box. They still have to design.
Yeah, they they have to designate an area that's going to be dedicated to their system.
Now, another concern that I think is coming up, I think the two two houses today didn't have a significant height, lot height differential to adjoining properties. But some of them where we're going to have the ten feet are going to be next to other properties that have never been raised once before in the past. And I'm concerned that when I get a package, I'm poring over these things, looking for spot elevations on the on the thing, rather than more of an overview that's just maybe whether it's a verbal description or at some point I would like to see a profile sectional, say, drawn at the twenty at the setback line at the front of the building to see what that profile looks across.
Boy, that's part of the, it would be part of the requirements again. Be good.
Yes. Now, is that something we should see at this stage? Because that that
Okay.
That has serious impact.
That's what I think. I mean, I mean, this this one house today had quite a bit of preboard that you commented on. Some of them are going to have sixteen.
Right, and how do we terrace it down?
Exactly.
Yeah. So again, that will come out because they have to, they'll have a survey, obviously.
Right.
Existing survey. They'll have floor plans, which will have elevations on it. They'll have elevations of the building design.
But in terms of in in terms of of blending into into the, you know, into their neighbors, I I think that's something that they're going to want input on at this early stage. I don't think they're going to want want to be waiting until.
But I think we we will make comment to that, but then they have to address that when they come in.
But that means they're going back the second time. What I'm saying is, how do we get that information the first time?
Then it's steps. Then it goes to step to review that compliance.
And and just for the record, I know that guy usually does ask them to have sectional for the building permit stage to show how they're be draining the water, the drainage at the end of the property. Now let him comment more on that.
Well, this is this isn't only a drainage issue. It's 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 how it looks, you know, whether whether they're doing it all at once, whether they're staging small walls or or what they're doing. It it doesn't necessarily mean it's only there for drainage.
I do complement what we've here that your, I mean, proposals, as stated, are very clear. So it's inevitable that once building plans are submitted, there will be changes. Things are going to shift. And usually by making, you know, conditions, it ties them into doing exactly what the board has approved. So even though we might shift something five or ten feet to the left or to the right, they still have to put that tree in because that is a condition. So it might shift a little bit, but that is what I say. You have been approved contingent on doing this according to the board. So even though you move things around, it has to be here. And generally, they they do comply. Make sure that they abide by what, you know, because the thing is, you're going to go back to P and Z. You know, if it's not done, so, you know, we usually ask them.
Again, excuse me. You know, I think it's going to take some give and take and review and re-review.
Yes.
And I just, I I'm just kind of saddened by this because, you know, then it comes into you know, Pam's advice as to, you know, they're committed to this, and, you know, you're becoming subjective and, you know, it 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 leads into other aspects of the review.
I get an opportunity to meet with Neil, who's the only one that did need to talk about some of the issues, which we will try to do after this meeting. But I think you're on the right track. One of the things that you want to do is to be as specific as you can in your motions. As Derani said, that ties them to it, but we don't want them coming back over small issues that can be resolved by staff with your word. So when you make a motion, it's a strong motion, they have to do it. Or you have to rely upon staff to make sure that it's done. You can also add something so that you feel secure in that, that after it's done, it comes back just as a, not as a motion item, but as just information for you so that you know it was done. Maybe that will make you feel more secure that they accomplished the thing that you discussed.
Yeah. Yeah, well said. That's, I think.
Yeah, because our goal, I think, is to make it as, you know, cost effective for the homeowner as possible, trying to, you know, and time time effective and cost effective.
Cost effective for staff too.
I'm I'm a hundred percent for your six to eight sheets, five to seven sheets that that we'd like to have. My clarification is, is that the same amount at that stage that the that will be submitted to the town?
For the building permit.
For the building department, and then only after after it passes our, we have a motion to approve, then there they go in and they spend more money to
So I think we're somehow surrounding this wagon in various directions, but I think
Yeah, I mean, it's not clear clear as to when the information is required. One of the things that we discussed was moving this plan review up a little bit to prevent them from submitting everything in advance. So is that something that we want to address? Figuring out which items need to be done before they get here, and then after the project is approved, we did want to say now we have thirty days or sixty days to get the rest of the project components.
I I mean, yeah, once they they have this checklist, it's just the government family view. Once you go into the building permit stage, they have their own checklist to abide by. So the building a whole
Right now, it's it's meshed in or that's what the problem is, and the frustration is real from the
What would be then nicer is that the applicant can get before us faster. In the time they they make a commitment to that project and get to us. You know, we want to make that that compact and and efficient for the think think of it, if any of us were building a new home here and now, how frustrating it would be that it struggled on for months and months.
I'll thank you all to come to one of my presentations.
I have one other comment is I really don't think adding section sixty-three fifty-six to the checklist is necessary. I think maybe referencing section sixty-three fifty-six in the checklist. But it feels like, you know, as I look at this, it's going to be a huge part of what they see as the checklist. It feels a little uncomfortable to me.
Yeah, I agree.
So just do, instead of adding all that, just say
So just do, instead of adding all that, just say applicant shall provide a narrative that identifies. So just say that first sentence.
Yes.
Plain and simple. Yeah.
And, and you can reference according to section 53, 6356.
I think you're right. I agree with that. So you're, you're
You just want the first sentence right here.
Yep.
Because that, the rest of that is what our role is.
To don't list it, but we'll just say provide a narrative that references the elements in section 6356.
Yeah, short narrative. Brief narratives.
And I would just like to say for the record, because I, I know that, that works. I've been giving them like a really hard timeline. So when an application does come in within 24 to 48 hours, we review to see everything on the checklist is there or if it's too much, whatever the case, and then staff, I give them a week to pretty much review and come back with either comments or not. And if they do have comments, sometimes it's the applicant that holds up on how long they take to answer those comments. And that also extend the process. And then, you know, when they submit again, that, that's also a part of the issue as well. Sometimes an applicant takes two to three weeks to respond to a comment, and then as soon as they respond, they're like, okay, I want to get done, you know, tomorrow. And that is also an issue because then staff needs to review. Once they give me the go ahead, then I see, okay, when is my notice guidelines? When can they go based on my notice guidelines?
Thank you.
All right. So everybody happy?
Well, happy with what?
With a discuss format, new format. I think it's a start.
Do we need to have a motion on this?
I would like, I would like some sort of consensus or motion so that staff knows how to proceed.
Yeah, I'd like. No, I think they'll depend on my right. My wingman for the pilots that are here.
That'd be you, Rick.
Well, since it's among us, staff and commission, this should be easier and we'd like a, a finalization of a revised checklist. Uh, this is the motion that, uh, that includes what we have before us up to the end of the first line of page 12, deleting the remainder of page 12. Any additions that need to be that? Okay.
That's a great start.
Our second motion.
Paul in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hey. You just have to dry it out?
No, good job, Trace. That's and Pam and Garland.
Okay, um, next item. Start relating numbers. Is number seven, the view of the water conservation, landscape and irrigation memorandum of gifts.
Yes, this is being presented to us by the South Florida Water Management District to comply with their regulations. We had Jennifer in the town attorney's office review everything, and she submitted a memo for you to review.
Two ordinances that they are tied together.
Yeah, if you want to tie number seven and number eight together, we can do that for discussion.
Can I just ask for curiosity, where did I fall asleep? You know, 10 years ago, whenever we had a water shortage, it was three days a week without water. And it's Tuesday, Thursday, and Sunday, I think.
The worst.
Yeah, I think it also varies
Now we're to
Your address. Yeah.
No, I mean, it's, it's an uneven number. I know that, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Mike, I've always been on a three days. Then
Now it's, I think, being changed to two days.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I know this was changed. I didn't know what
You're now going to get
They changed it from three to two a while ago. And we never got caught up with our code. So now they're
Okay.
They've come to us
Explain, I mean, I
Need to revise.
And they're, they're asking for consistency. Um, the reason that I had Jennifer from my office review this is because she's reviewed and changed about half a dozen of these already. So she's in close contact with the South Florida Water Management District. They're trying to get the entire county to be on board with their process and to provide for penalties in your code so that if somebody's violating, the chief will be able to, um, to regulate and ticket them appropriately. That's the, they think what they're asking.
Well, I would suggest that this be broadcast pretty well to citizens.
Absolutely.
I thought I was in touch with those things, but I was tripped up by this one.
Yeah, we're doing better now in communicating with the public. We're putting new ordinance sections in the newsletter, on the website, getting the word out in town commission meetings.
I have a question for the town attorney. So are these revocable by the town commission at some point? Sure. Because we're, we're delicate, and especially in the emergency plan of shortage plan, we're, we're taking action, we're allowing an action to be taken by a third party that affects our code enforcement that has to be done without action here at the town. That, you know, they say there's water shortage and we have to go around and ticket. That's a little uncomfortable that
That's what it was last time.
Right. So my other comment is that how the process and possibly we could have the chief weigh in here on this. Is that the violations, first, second, third, fourth violations, and particularly how they happen with so many of our residents that are not full-time residents here. So all you need is a power outage and your sprinkler systems kicking in on the wrong day or the wrong hours. And the homeowners in Michigan or Ohio, wherever they
Who declined in the penalties? Is that them or us?
That was them.
Them? Okay.
But we, we could modify them, correct?
Well, it says in here, you can be more restrictive but not less.
Right. I mean, these are, you get up to $250 and $500 fines, they're pretty substantial. So how, how do we manage that? You know, we've tended to be a town that we go with courtesy first and working with our working with our residents before we start slapping fines down.
Well, and it still will. The first violation is a warning.
So, so how does that violation get delivered to the seasonal resident that's not there?
So in the past, enforcement of the South Florida Water Management District's declaration of a water emergency has been handled by a citation process like this directed to the town by the Water Management District on a water management citation. So when I read this, having not been aware of it until we got the package, I would tell you that it appears as if acceptance of this ordinance without further consideration may be burdensome on the town and its enforcement because if they wish to the way I understand our current code to be written, if they wish to contest their second violation of $50, they will go to county court. And it will require an attorney to be present. Our attorney, not the South Florida Water Management District's attorney. We always handle code enforcement as code compliance in the beginning. So by that, what I mean is, we try and educate people first. If the South Florida, in reading this, my understanding would be that if the South Florida Water Management District declares a drought or a water emergency, we will probably be very strict in enforcement of this particular ordinance on a first violation. And unfortunately, if you're unable to rectify your sprinkler system issues because you're out of town, you will likely receive that $250 fine very, very quickly, which will actually be 300 because you will have gotten a 50 and then a 250. I understand the necessity behind this from the, the drought perspective and, and South Florida Water Management. I just don't know if this is where the town would want to go, because I believe there are some, and I would have to defer to the attorney. I believe there are some other avenues of enforcement through South Florida Water Management Citation Process that was enacted in the past that may better serve the town rather than having independent ordinance.
The other thing we're trying to address is the drainage problems and overwatering. Helps with that problem. So it doesn't help with it.
This not overwatering helps us a lot, but how we get there is, I think
We can have our own town ordinance without having to comply with a non-town entities set of violations and fines and penalties.
And that may be something that you want to consider. I, I don't know. I would defer to the attorney.
Well, I would have to talk to them. I would, I would talk to them. I don't know.
Gee. Compliance and penalties do not require an emergency.
I, I understand.
There are two ordinances here, both which
Severe, severe, severe and very specific.
The first one is just normal use, the first ordinance. That's the two, that's the watering on the certain days and whatever. And what's the duration of anything? If you give me a warning this year and then you give me one next year, is that my second or my first? Uh, well, I would have to say that I'm going to use this term and people don't like it, but I would think that the officer or the staff member that's doing the enforcement of this would have to have some discretion to determine that. But I can tell you from my personal perspective as a law enforcement officer, if I tell you that you are in violation and I warn you on your first violation today, and I come back tomorrow and the water is still going, that is a second violation. If taking into consideration what Mr. Carey said, there is a power outage in town, my discretion may kick in and I would probably likely say, I'm aware that there was, and I'm aware that these clocks are mechanical often. And so they're off or they're electronic computerized that get out of sync and they, they flash. And if I ask you to fix it and you say, oh, my gosh, here's what the problem is, we would use some discretion and not issuing a citation. I can't give you any more than I can tell you that you, that, that, that a police officer will always issue you a citation going six miles over the speed limit regardless of any conditions. I can't tell you what the individual enforcement officer will take into consideration when they're doing this. Most of our, the, the conditional violation that we put out in our ordinances is often written like this, and there is discretion. So in the first ordinance that you have before you, on a regular basis, I think we would have to take that into consideration. On a water emergency ordinance, I think that those discretionary guidelines kind of change considerably. And you saw it the last time, for all of you that lived here, you saw it the last time we went through that full emergency and started issuing multiple citations to residents.
I think it's
It is, it is, it is a considerable change, in my opinion, from three days to two days, and I was not aware of that either. So I am in violation at home.
And nothing says about duration of
10 a.m. to 4 p.m.
No, no, no. I mean, how long your sprinklers can be set.
Correct.
I mean, you can run instead of 15 minute cycles, you can go 30 minute.
And I, and I anticipate and I anticipate based on personal experience that that's what will occur, and that there will be no water in between 10 a.m. and 4 p.m. But at 4 o'clock, those that have lush landscape that want to maintain it, you will see a longer cycle to get
Which you're aware
One inch of water on the ground so that it can percolate properly and be
Water twice on the same day, one at the beginning of the year and one
And you may see that, depending upon what kind of plantings you have in town.
I personally favor the town setting its own ordinances rather than
Didn't know the problem with the three day. That's
Maybe I haven't been listening well enough. The county or the Water Management District has one rule. Do they take precedence over anything we do here?
They, you know, that's, that's an excellent question. I think that if you have something different from them, that they can regulate, it will be incumbent for them to regulate, which means that they would have to send in their own people. Um, and, and you do a violation. I don't believe that you can be less stringent than the South Florida Water Management District. They have priority over that. And that's why they were able to go and say, you need to do this, you need to do that.
You have no choice as a city.
As a citizen, you have no choice. The city can say, we're hands off, we're not getting involved. It's not our issue. These are our rules. So our police officers our police enforcement officers but that does not stop the South Florida Water Management District from sending in their own people. You can't, you can't force them to do what you want.
I, I'm going to, to, to weigh in on that a little bit to your question, only because I look at this in a similar manner as I do a state law versus a city ordinance. The state certainly has the authority to
Right.
enact laws that cover everyone. And I believe that under rules of administrative code, that the water management has certain authority to do that over there. I don't believe they have legislative authority to make laws, but I believe that they, under administrative code, are given certain powers. I would I would, I would probably consider doing whatever we can to maintain control of this, rather than having someone come in and accept in a severe emergency situation. And regulated ourselves because in this, in, in a severe emergency, you will find as we have in the past, and I'll use the town of Palm Beach as a perfect example. We went into a drought situation, the South Florida Management, Water Management District mandated that we issue citations for violations. We, as a town, agreed amongst ourselves that that was the best priority, and we would try and get some compliance, and then those that absolutely refused got their citations. The town of Palm Beach became the poster child because people drove through and took video of a state's watering all over the time, all over the day, and there were, there were some boisterous folks up there who said, you can't regulate us. And I think that they, they found that the court of public opinion didn't work well. So there's a lot of different situations for this kind of stuff.
But gee, we can talk about it some more.
But I don't know, I would, I would
I'm going to be
Based upon what you've brought up.
I'd like to get into demolition.
Chief.
So if you could defer this back to staff for extra review, we'll bring that.
Make a motion to defer?
Yeah.
Paul in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, moving on to the number nine, ordinance review demolition.
Yeah.
We need this.
Yes, this has come to you based on our joint workshop meeting with the town commission and planning and zone commission. Staff was directed to draft amendments to the demolition code to ensure that the structure would fight demolition. We also looked at certain cases such as nuisance properties. We just had one recently structured to demolish, we have no plans for rebuilding right now. Um, we took that into consideration and added a requirement that if demolition is not tied to a reconstruction, then the empty lot requirements of the town code shall be met before final inspection is approved for the demolition permit.
I like what you've written.
Yeah, I agree.
Drive on, South Island Drive today certainly demonstrated a nice ordinance.
Thank you.
That needs to be addressed. And hopefully this ordinance would have prevented it.
Any other comments?
Yes, I do. I actually don't think it goes far enough. It's, it's, it's tying what should happen to It's, it's, it's tying what should happen to start a better process, but it's not addressing what happens when it fails. And I think it needs to be more comprehensive. I think it needs to connect with 6711 and 6713, which are construction abandonment and enforcement. Giorani. Someone else mentioned Island Drive, so I won't. I'll, I'll just take the town as a whole. Do we have any abandonment or blight actions going that are going to reverse what's there, not just put a fence around it?
Well, I've been using a pen knife instead of a screwdriver because I don't have the correct tool. This helps a lot. There, there, we, there was no specific ordinance that dealt with someone applies for a demolition. So as building official, my primary code reference is the building code. So the building codes does not require that when someone applies for a demolition permit, that they prove that they are going to rebuild within a given time. Correct. That does not exist. So now we defer to the town ordinance. There was nothing specific also in the town ordinance that, you know, did that. So we've been, you know, kind of pushing, you know, I mean, for example, 6009, you know, we kind of stretched our hand a bit, you know, encouraged the contractor to make sure that he, he sign off on ensuring that certain things will happen after this demolition. The, you know, the, the attorney, you know, can let us know whether or not we really did, but they did agree to all this. But this helps a lot because now we can point to an ordinance. And whether or not it goes far enough, I mean, it is something that we could discuss, but I cannot, you know, say already. It, it gives me a tool that, you know, I can go with to, you know, prevent the issues that we talked about specifically for those lots that, you know, they started demolition without the appropriate permits, that the next time a demolition comes in, we can point to this and say, you cannot have this permit because we have a ordinance that specifically says.
Right, but even, even with what's generated here, I'll come back to that other subject in a second and maybe Tracy can answer that. There's no, no time specified that says you, your permit expired, you didn't do anything, or whatever. We're not saying that night, if you let it expire for 90 days after you knocked it down and you aren't restoring or whatever, that further action is going to be taken. I'll go back to the, the joint meeting. We talked about a surface, a bomb, or some financial impact that occurs to, to get them motivated rather than waiting to go to a magistrate. Obviously, on my street, I don't know if I'm going to live long enough to see it go to a magistrate. It's, it's been sitting there now for two years?
Neil, I think if you read this, it says that the demolition cannot occur unless it either meets empty lot requirements or the demolition permit is accompanied by an approved building permit. That doesn't mean just put your application in.
No, I understand that.
Approved building permit, and then once an approved building permit is issued, they have six months with that permit.
But there's still nothing that's forcing them to perform.
Well, this ordinance does because we can now bring this to the magistrate and it is no $250 per day. Prior to this, we had nothing. I mean, they did not, we really did not have any tool to say, most, you know, rebuild, you know, I mean, the demolition permits stood on its own. Again, you know, we, we, we could flesh this out, we could add, you know, accompany.
I mean, you've got in here that.
It's a good start.
You have a phrase in here that said the permit is being sought, including a time certain within which new construction will be commenced and be completed. Why is it they? Why is it there a time certain specified in this, in this ordinance?
Where are you reading, Neil?
I, I, I thought the same thing. Where are you reading?
Stage one.
This is in the.
Bottom paragraph.
Edition, right, in the top certain. So I guess we could either put a time certain in here or depending on the.
You're never saying when the clock starts running is my point.
The structure, well, it could be the building permit. They may have to save it to go before that. And they have to be a time certain that we approve.
And we already have that on the vote.
Because it depends, it depends on what avenues, I guess, they have to move. Do they have to demop? Do they have to add more fill? It would be very difficult to force a timeframe in this section. We could put it in the application. We could put it in the site plan because this is only, this is for structures that are just for making the lots that will have a new structure put on. So we just have to force them.
And we do because we have the time limit for construction in our code already to the different sections.
And, and what this is.
That. Your point, I understand your point.
Is that this application will actually have to come here. If it's a new application, they'll have to come to the end. So they're going to.
I think.
You know. They're going to be demolishing that stroke.
One thing that Neil mentioned, which is a bond or something, I've been trying to think, I know some towns have that as a, you know.
Condition for any demolition?
Yeah, that, that would be a, I don't, I think time and then, I think if we have a bond that we can use to remedy the situation.
The process now, I mean, it's, it's. I mean, what, what is it going to do? They can, they could run the demolition timeout to where and then the permit timeout to where? You're still talking years, not months. And there should be something here that.
Not a favorable, but, you know, kind of like with the water storage issue. How are your constituents going to deal with that? It can be a burden. Yeah, I think we can certainly add a bond, but it just has its own.
So I don't.
But it's a burden to look at that, that's, that has depressed real estate values in the north end of town unbelievably.
Look back, I'll have to look back in a minute because we did discuss bond and I don't know if we had a set consensus to move forward with the bond.
It wasn't that meeting.
I'll, I'll check again.
No, I think the consensus was for us to analyze it more closely.
I mean, this is a, this, I'm not saying this isn't a step forward. I'm just saying it doesn't go far enough and it's not.
But the question is, what are you going to do with the bond? Are you going to go in and fix it? Because that's what about this.
The bond is to save this.
What are we doing if we go to a magistrate?
They get fined on the property.
But, but what, but what, what do we do with the money if we get it? We still let the thing sit there?
Well, the fines run until it's fixed.
We can put it back to a greenfield state. Somebody can, if they're paid.
The bond does ensure that the municipality has the ability to spend funds to rectify.
Right.
And that's.
By hiring a contractor.
That's the problem. You can't.
How, what is, what is the cost of the bond if they perform as expected? Not, not that much. It only becomes a burden on them if they don't do what they're supposed to do.
I know, but what do you want to do with the bond? Once you get it. So they give us $5,000.
I don't think, I, I think that's, that's token, that's a fine. That's not, that's not a bond.
I, I think you're, you're onto something, Neil, but I think it has to be something that's really clean and upfront so that people are.
Yeah, but let's discuss this. What kind of bond are you looking for? What, what do you want to see as an end result with the bond?
I would like to see it go back to a green site if.
Well, first you have to, if it's partial demolition, you have to continue the demolition. So that's a couple.
Correct.
And then you have to rectify the lot to look like a landscaped space.
Which it says here that they have to do.
The bond would not preclude you from still going to a magistrate. Correct?
It does not. You can do both.
Correct. So it depends on the stage that it, that it would be, whether you're just ameliorating the damage that's been done or whether you're just getting started. But it, it, it leaves us not empty, empty pockets and an eyesore that's not going to get remedied. Right now, there's no motivation. So.
I think what you're talking, well, maybe it's not wrong. Maybe you're saying you want them to put up kind of like a deposit and if they fail to comply, we get the keeping money. That's like a penalty.
Maybe a percentage of the permit fee. That's just a little bit of insurance.
Right, failure to provide.
I mean, it's going to be something, bonds scare people, especially private, private residents or residential. And I know what you're suffering and I totally agree with it. It's 99% of the people in this town with single families are going to comply with whatever they're committed to. But if there was a additional fee as part of the applicant, you know, that, that could be put aside and then returned, obviously, or what am I trying to say? Return. I mean, after completion of the project, it, it's returned to the.
We can't be the only town that's dealing with this or has dealt with it. There's got to be an ability for staff to find out how other communities are addressing this. Okay.
Well, you know, mostly they just put, they put liens on property.
Yeah, lien is your.
It's, it's because of incentive when you try to sell your house, when you try to finance it, when you try to get any type of a loan at all. They look at it and they say, you gotta, you have to, you've got to clean this lien up. You know, they, liens last for 20 years and you can charge up to $250 a day.
Okay, well, I know that another house in our, two other houses in my neighborhood have been condemned. Is that not correct? Marlin and another one on Island Drive South that I won't give a number for now. They, they also took in extremis. What, is there any action being taken now to, to take this one to a judge?
There is no current action, but it is something we, you know.
There is some what?
There is no current action right now. I mean, he came to a magistrate for a few other issues. At his danger, the corrector. Makes no sense what he's doing, but we will be moving to get him motivated. And he's already gone to magistrate and paid some fines already. You know, we'll, we'll be working on, on that also, that specific property.
So we're not, we're not moving to condemn it?
It's not on the table at this moment.
All right, I think, all right. And I don't want to diminish or demean this any, because it's hugely important. It seems that we're not in a position to move this along to commission. Is that the feeling of this commission?
Well, I don't know whether we only get one, one shot at it or whether we can, whether we can pass this ordinance on to the town and give the staff some, some tools and then keep working and trying to improve on it. It seems to me that we don't have anything right now. And this, this is a substantial improvement.
It's a step in the right direction. It is. And I, I'm a party to that. I mean, it's, it's, it's stage one, but it's not, it's not fixing it. It's only, you're, you're only incentivizing the player that probably would have done it anyway.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you, but I, I'd sure like to get, get this by the town commission.
That, and passing this stops further reform of it, I can't support it. If, if, if this is a step one and we're committed to doing more, I, you have my, my support.
You could draft a motion that says that you recommend this ordinance to move to the town commission for approval and direct staff to review construction bonds and come back to you with that particular item.
Bonds and fines.
Not only bonds, but the time certain issue. Both.
I'm going to look at that before.
Thank you.
Just to make sure that losing is tied up. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, commission are going to have, town commission are going to have the same discussion we're having.
Exactly.
With nothing. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm all in favor of just, I mean, we need it.
Would you, you.
Have cooked to.
Have it come back to us.
Okay, I'd rather defer. Okay, I hate to say that, but I just don't think there are legitimate points that Neil has brought up and, you know, how to hold an applicant you're responsible for inaction or whatever your term is.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to defer?
Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion to defer. Whether or even for, for the time certain definition and for looking at financial motivation in terms of a bond.
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Thank you.
All right, meeting dates. Just tell us when we need to meet.
They work for me. I already had them on the calendar. You must have given us these dates before.
I've got problems with January.
Jim, do you have any problems filling in for Neil if he has a problem with the January date?
No.
Since I don't have those dates.
Yep, January 11th and February 8th.
And if you all approve, I will send out a sheet like I did last year of all the meeting dates for the next, next year. That way you all have the, the full list.
Should work for me.
Ben, give it works again.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Don't forget, we have to.
Okay, okay, let's make this.
Yeah, this can be really quick. First of all, we need a motion to adopt the minutes from December 16, 2019.
So a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
And then you all have the, for you, the annual report that will be going to the town condition from the Infra, Infra Tax Committee. You all approve the report, make a motion and a second to approve to go to town commission.
And I just clarification.
Yes.
You know, we've been not acting on this or designating any improvements.
Correct, all of us, we are saving the money.
Go on record, we need to keep this kid alive. So until such time, the commission, town commissioner, I just don't want anybody cherry picking its funding right now. That's mine.
Okay, so I will, I can put that in your report to the town. That you wish to not spend any funds.
But I'd like to hear the rest of the conditions.
I agree.
It's windfall, we got to hold on to.
So is this a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Fix.
Who motioned in second, David?
I made the motion.
I see.
We should do adjourn this.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Hi. Thank you all.
Yeah, I must make you good. Thank you.
Mr. Morris, thank you for staying.
You did a good job.
Thank you for staying.